We went here five minutes. No, I saw White walking on his house.
Oh, um, I spoke to. I spoke to North Cross, um, he didn't say he would not.
There he is, we got one.
That's one.
There we go.
Oh, yeah.
I just spoke to him.
Hey.
Hey, how you doing?
Yeah, you doing good?
Oh, sorry, we, uh, we got.
Oh, we're cutting the bomb.
Well, we're doing like two more.
May not. They've usually been hanging around.
Another one's trying to try. I know, I'm, I'm a little worried that he takes. And I started very late last night.
No one said they would.
And then I got one in the middle and one out. But all my kids want, he's having a conversation with me. So she got kind of. On the night, yeah, it's, it's the easiest part. Six, six, nine, four, four, twelve. He's struggling, he's struggling with his first day. First day, he started coming out.
They, if, if you, if you. Okay, but.
Yes. So, yes, he's older than I am, older six.
And then they're okay.
Yeah.
The streets of the area. The whole country.
Count on, all the way.
No, um, I think the more I'll tell what he wants to do, um.
How you doing, guys?
I'm good, how are you?
Okay.
What about summer call?
It's going, I like it. How about you guys?
Have you ever seen the nineteen fifty-nine photo series, Pontiac, from the air? Photographer.
Mm-mm. Okay.
Basically, up, come out, out of there.
Okay. That was the only way you could do it back then, right?
Not only Pontiac, but also Observatory, Angeles, Grand Road, if you.
Okay.
Building.
Right.
So it's just all these kind of, sort of, the airport, you know, different things, there is the Pontiac, that's in the same area.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But it's made of.
Right, I've done it in different ways. I fly a paraglider, so these guys probably don't know, so I fly a paraglider and I've flown over the city a few times. Yeah, so I've got some interesting shots with my feet, looking down at the building, so that's the only way you know it's not a drone.
There's material photos, I don't know what decade, but on the top of what is now Pontiac, maybe.
Hmm, yeah.
Here on, south end.
Right.
They had office through, in this simple, big Pontiac airport.
Are you serious? That's awesome. That's awesome. And, and, and when did Pontiac sell the airport to the county?
I think straight to the.
Four?
County, I think, if you're mentioning.
What did they trade for?
Uh, the Sonic Temple, which is now a lot to be.
Wow, wow.
For a minute was using that as sort of like their auxiliary offices, as they were moving, their port, for houses along the town.
Wow.
They kind of, I think it's the material view of nineteen fifty-nine, none of the town, complex, salt, building, center of. Old, probation office now, health department, old, old, old buildings.
I guess who would have known how valuable that airport would be, right? Like, there's so much traffic coming in there. Yeah. It was too expensive to run it, yeah.
At the time, people had a hospital, thought that we were operating.
Right.
We squatted, really different, complex.
What do you mean, the city had a hospital?
Yes, Pontiac General Hospital.
That was owned by the city?
Right.
Is that right? Wow. Crazy.
We're touching on, um, I know mine was gonna be, I just got a message from.
Yeah. Maybe a quorum, so we're good?
We're good.
Okay.
Are the applicants here?
Yeah.
They're not outside?
Yeah, I haven't seen them yet, um, but we are live.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and begin then. All right, I'm gonna call the order, the Pontiac Plan Commission Meeting for July sixth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, roll call, please.
Uh, yes, uh, Chair Peggley.
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Bibby.
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Redflock.
Present.
And Mr. Shepherd.
Present.
Um, you have a forum, and I'd like to see, uh, Commissioner Carlin, and Commissioner.
Okay. All right, amendments to the agenda, we are going to remove, um, item six point two. The SEP twenty-two dash oh-six special exception permit for Crown Enterprises. Um, may I have a motion to approve the new agenda without that item?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Uh, Commissioner Redflock.
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to approve.
And Chair Peggley.
Yes, to approve.
Uh, we're going to amend the agenda, within a higher number of projects.
Okay, um, meeting minutes for review are from June first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Commissioner McGinnis, do you have any comments or questions or changes to those?
No, one month ago feels like a lifetime ago.
Okay, Commissioner Northcross, do you have any?
Yes, I do, on page seventy-one, line ten, the item fatal law, that should read fatal flaw. F L A W.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
Excellent set of minutes.
Commissioner Shepherd, do you have any comments?
Nothing from me, thank you.
I do not either, may I have a motion to approve the minutes with the one correction from Commissioner Northcross?
Move, McGinnis.
Second?
Support.
Roll call?
Uh, Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Redflock?
Yes, to approve.
And Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Yes, to approve. All right, we do not have any special presentations, so the first will be a public hearing for ZMA twenty-two dash oh-six zoning map amendment.
Yes, and I will be, uh, doing this presentation today. All right, so the, uh, first public hearing item we have today is ZMA two-two dash zero-six, this is a zoning map amendment on behalf of the applicant BYOP Properties Caesar Chavez LLC. Um, this is a rezoning for the, or a proposed medical marijuana grower and park processing facility um, across two parcels, um, six-four-one-four-one-nine-four-two-six dash zero-one-three and six-four-one-four-one-nine-four-two-six dash zero-zero-three. Uh, parcels are currently zoned C-three corridor commercial and R-one single family, one-family dwelling district. And the applicant is proposing to amend the zoning districts of lots four and five of parcel six-four-one-four-one-nine-four-two-six-zero-one-three and all of parcel six-four-one-four-one-nine-four-two-six-zero-zero-three from C-three corridor commercial to M-one light manufacturing zoning district. Um, as mentioned, the proposed uses, uh, for this site are marijuana grower, uh, which permits the entities to grow, cultivate, dry, trim, cure, and package marijuana products, and marijuana processor, which, uh, permit the commercial entities to purchase marijuana from growers and extract resin from marijuana to create marijuana-infused products for sale or transfer. Uh, for reference, the property is located along Caesar Chavez at the intersection of Kenny and E- Caesar E Chavez, um, located in the Caesar Chavez overlay, or marijuana overlay district. Um, we did provide just some images on your screen of the property, it is currently a vacant, a series, or a pair of parcels, um, and you can see that on the screen to the east and the west. Um, so eastbound, that's, uh, coming down Kenny, where you would, looks like you're gonna make a left on Caesar Chavez, and, and, uh, westbound, you're heading out the city, and that, right where that white car is, where you would make that right onto Kenny. Um, so for reference. Um, so the site, as you can see on the screen, it consists of two parcels. Um, you have the larger parcel, uh, which is the zero-one-three parcel, uh, which has the two stars in it, and then you have the smaller zero-zero-three parcel with one star. Uh, the one-star parcel is the all of zero-zero-three that we are proposing to rezone. And then of the larger parcel, we are only proposing a rezoning for the two lots immediately facing Caesar Chavez. And as we go on, you'll, uh, be clear of what that is. Um, so as you see, just for reference, we are rezoning those, uh, tracks or lots of land directly uh, fronting Caesar Chavez and Kenny. Those lots to the rear of that property, we're gonna, uh, the zoning is not gonna change, so it will remain the same. Um, so the Caesar Chavez corridor consists of, uh, predominantly C-three corridor commercial and M-one zone districts, um, which would be the light manufacturing district that we are also proposing. Um, and then details, uh, the district is designed for mixed revues appropriate along the thorough, uh, thoroughfare and collector's streets um, that have moderate to large traffic volumes. Um, and these typically service, uh, a lot of the retail and commercial, low, uh, low-impact light industrial and office uses you may see along the Caesar Chavez corridor. Um, so as it is zoned today, um, you can see that that parcel is, it does have a split zoning. So the northern half of the parcel is zoned currently R-one residential, and the, uh, those three-star parcels, or those three lots associated, uh, along with Caesar Chavez are currently zoned C-three. Um, so as it exists today, there are two parcels, I'm sorry, there are two zoning classifications associated with these parcels, R-one residential and C-three corridor commercial. Um, as mentioned, the proposed rezoning to M-one light manufacturing is only taking place on lot four, lot five, and then the total of the, uh, zero-one-three parcel. Um, so just that rectangle you see, uh, where it is C-three, those are the parcels that we are rezoning. And we are proposing to go from the C-three parcel to the M-one, uh, to permit the marijuana uses, um, in this district. Um, at your previous planning commission meeting, the applicant did come before the board and request a preliminary site plan hearing, uh, where we were able to go over a lot of the, uh, topics related directly to that site plan. Um, here, you can see how that site plan is overlaid with the proposed zoning. So the area in the back is going to remain residential and will be used predominantly or all for parking, exclusively for parking, the residential land would remain. Uh, where the building would be located at the intersection of Kenny and Caesar Chavez, that will be rezoned to M-one, and that would allow the proposed uses by right. Uh, when we look at our future land use plan, um, you can also see the yellow in the rear is the traditional residential, uh, future land use designation, uh, which is in compliance with the zoning today. And then the, uh, future land use designation for those parcels at the intersection of Kenny and Caesar Chavez have a, an entrepreneur, industrial, and green, future land use designation, which is in compliance with the uses we're talking about today, uh, medical marijuana uses, uh, zoning classifications of the M-one, uh, light industrial district. And again, uh, we did establish a Caesar Chavez overlay district, um, and you can see where this parcel is located in relationship to that, um, and how part of it, or that parcels immediately fronting Caesar Chavez are within the district, and those residential parcels to the rear currently zoned R-one are not inside that overlay. Um, so it does work out in terms of the residential is gonna remain, uh, residential or not intended to be manufacturing or, uh, medical marijuana uses, and those parcels adjacent to Caesar Chavez would, uh, fall into this overlay where we did recommend or permit marijuana uses. Um, our zoning ordinance does have buffer distance restrictions related to marijuana uses, um, inside the overlay. Uh, it does meet all of the criteria. There is a fifth criteria that does not come into play to this property as it relates to a buffer for residential, uh, parcels or parcels used or zoned residentially. That does not apply for, uh, parcels inside the overlay. Um, so for those five provisioning center and other non-provisioning center uses outside the overlay district, that comes into play, but inside the district, it does meet all of the, uh, buffer distance requirements outlined in the zoning ordinance. Um, with all of our zoning map amendments, there are ten criteria, uh, that we look at to determine the suitability of a proposed rezoning, uh, the first being compliance with the goals and policies of the master plan. Uh, compatibility of the site's physical, uh, geological, hyd- hydrological, and other environmental issues proposed with the uses that would be going into that district, it does comply. Evidence that the applicant cannot receive a reasonable return on investment through developing the property with one or more of the uses permitted under the current zoning, uh, district as this property was permitted to be within the zoning overlay. Um, it, we anticipated rezonings would happen to further permit these uses, so it would be compliant with this criteria. Uh, compatibility of all the potential uses allowed in the zoning district and surrounding uses. Um, the, the Caesar Chavez corridor is a industrial, semi-industrial corridor, and we would be keeping those uses, um, out of the residential districts, and would not encroach them for those districts, um, and stay in compliance or with the intent of what the zoning for that area was as it was intended to be. Uh, the capacity of the city's utilities and services are suf- are sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the requested district. Uh, the compatibility of the, compatibility of the street system to safely and efficiently accommodate the expected traffic generated by uses permitted in the requested zoning district. Uh, the boundaries of the requested rezoning district are reasonable in relationship to the surroundings and construction on the site will not be able, will be able to meet the dimensional regulations for the requested zoning district. Uh, if a rezoning is appropriate, the requested zoning district is considered to be more appropriate from the city's perspective than another zoning district, so it would not be appropriate to recommend a, uh, M-two or IP industrial district. Um, the M-one district is the most appropriate zoning district to request for this, these proposed uses. And the last two here is the capacity of the city's utilities and services are sufficient to accommodate the uses, um, and the compatibility of the, compatibility of the street system is safely and efficient to accommodate the expected traffic. And that concludes the presentation for ZMA two-two dash zero-six.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner McGinnis, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, uh, for the presentation and, and for acknowledging that the applicant was here at last month's, uh, planning commission meeting. The, this is not conditional, and I was curious what the, um, sometimes what the rationale might be for straight-up permanent rezoning versus conditional.
So, the, uh, straight-up rezonings are the typical, um, you know, everyone has, uh, are a- are able to request those. Staff, we are not able to, um, encourage conditions on rezonings, the applicants have to propose a conditional rezoning, um, and the applicant did not propose a conditional rezoning.
Are there other parcels along Caesar Chavez, uh, that are M-one?
There are, I'm sorry, let's go. There are other parcels, uh, along the corridor that are zoned M-one, um, on the south side or the, that would be the east side, uh, west side of Caesar Chavez, those parcels are zoned M-one light manufacturing.
I don't have strong concerns about an M-one designation and the fact that in the corridor, there are already existing M-one, uh, zoning designations. Thank you for, for pulling up that map. Um, I'm, I see that in terms of the technical review, on all, uh, fronts, they comply, you know, this proposal complies. And, uh, I think it's very promising that we can see redevelopment along Caesar Chavez Avenue, um, for that important corridor in our community. Um, I support the, the zoning map amendment, uh, change, and I don't have any other questions at this time.
And if I may add, uh, to your question, uh, on that side of Caesar Chavez, or that east or northern side, there are not M-one parcels that abut residential, aside from the Acme Auto Repair Lot.
Okay.
Uh, their storage yard in the rear abuts residential, and you can kinda see it, um, here in this, this corner right here, where this gray abuts the yellow. Um, and there are very few scenarios across the city where you see this happening. Um, what allows this to work is the residential land behind is being buffered by the parking and the additional landscaping required when you are proposing to use residential, residential land as parking, uh, which is one of the reasons why we, uh, recommend this rezoning.
And I think it's very, uh, appropriate that this thoroughfare can handle the, the traffic, the, the load, not that I'm anticipating, based upon what was shared previously, on that it will lead to heavy volumes, but still that this is a thoroughfare that is well-equipped, uh, for this or other M-one utilizations. No further questions at this time, but I see Mr. Gustafson has a further point.
Yeah, i- if, uh, through the chair, if I may, on two topics, uh, one thing, uh, and Donovan was, did a great job in regards, explaining that in regards to the parcels that we're looking at for the rezoning. So we would ask, following, um, your recommendation, and that recommendation goes on to council, and say that council accepts that recommendation and approves that rezoning, uh, they would have to do a lot split, okay? So that would define, uh, they would get a surveyor out there and define exactly what that new parcel is, and that would be done. And secondly, uh, with those residential parcels that you see back there, uh, remaining R-one, um, in our zoning dis- R-one zoning district, you can have parking for non, or for commercial type of uses in it, so we don't have to rezone that. We can remain it as R-one and use it strictly just for parking as this applicant is doing.
A follow-up question, um, what is the distance or range from a proposed zoning map amendment change that requires, uh, the municipality to communicate to property owners, residents nearby? What's the, the feet out?
Three hundred, uh, feet, uh, as the crow flies from all property lines.
I always appreciate a good zoning crow, and, and that took place for this, uh, proposal.
Yes, we did provide a three-hundred-foot notice to all residential, well, not residential, all properties.
All properties, property owners, yep.
And what's our preferred sort of time window that we do that, leading up to public hearings? Just out of curiosity, there's no wrong.
Fifteen days.
Okay.
So, uh, it had, it had fifteen days or more, uh, would be, would be in the Oaken Press, and then we send out mailers, uh, to the property owners that, and postmark that day. So they would get it within fifteen or a few days less, by the time mail gets to them.
And what's been your offices and staff's practice if you've received any correspondence or communication that might not come in person? Um, would you relay that to us, or?
Yes.
Okay, and that what, none in this instance?
If it's, uh, a written correspondent, it would appear on your, on your desk, it won't be in your packet, because the packet would have gone out in advance, but it would be on your desk as a communication before we get into that item, yes.
And typically, we have read it into the minutes also.
Okay. Excellent. And for the community's benefit, uh, if you still wanna weigh in, uh, if there is a favorable outcome with, from this planning commission, a zoning map amendment change does require two readings at the city council. Uh, so there'll be many more opportunities for public feedback if they wanna offer it. No further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Northcross, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a comment, I did a little more homework, um, that was my concern about odor, and was able to go on to the city's website and look at the, uh, ordinance number two-three-six-three of the medical marijuana zoning ordinance. And while that, uh, ordinance does not call out a quantitative level, it does call out a qualitative, uh, type of test, which is mainly the resident's noses. If the residents are not smelling anything, then it works. So that is actually in the ordinance, I also wanted to make that comment from the questions that I had, uh, the previous month.
Commissioner Shepherd, do you have any comments?
Um, I'll just make a comment to that, so we mentioned that last time too, the state has control over that. Um, the fact that the city put that in there, it didn't need to be there, 'cause the state is much tougher than we will ever be on that. So they control smells, um, security, all of that stuff, they're, they're pretty harsh about it, so they can lose their license if they have a, if they have an odor issue, if they don't handle right away, they can lose a very valuable license, which will cost them a lot of money, so, so it's a really good concern, 'cause that's what, like, uh, you know, if you have a grower in a basement, everybody around him smells it. Um, that was a big thing when the state did this whole, this whole program. And other than that, I don't have any questions, but, but good comment.
And, and if I may add, through the chair, to that point, um, in our ordinance, it's outlined as nuisances. Um, so, you know, the state, we can further support the state when we have these complaints, or the residents make, uh, complain. It, there are nuisances that, that we can look out for, and that can kinda help alleviate some concerns as they come in.
And also, the way the ordinance reads, along with the state, I mean, uh, state regulators, uh, the sheriff's department can come in at any time and inspect, see what's going on, and verify, you know, all information and so forth. And this is on a, on a yearly basis, so if you falter, uh, and have some complaints or violations against you, you might have some difficult time to get, uh, renewed license.
Um, this is a public hearing, so I am gonna open for public hearing, uh, there's no one in the audience, so I don't think there's any public comments, so I will close public comments. Um, I don't have any comments or questions, um, if someone would like to read a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval, the zoning map amendment ZMA two-two dash zero-six from BYOP Properties Caesar Chavez LLC, lots four and five, a parcel six-four-one-four- one four one nine four two six zero one three, and all of parcel four, beg your pardon? Six four, okay. All of parcel six four one four one nine four two six dash zero zero three to amend the zoning districts from C three corridor commercial to M one light manufacturing zoning district, and that this recommendation be presented to the city council for approval.
Thank you.
No support.
Thank you. Roll call?
Commissioner Northcross.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner, or Chair Begley.
Yes, to approve.
Motion passes, four zero.
We have nothing on the agenda for new business, public comments. I don't know if you would like for me to share this information on public?
Sure, please do.
So the shores at Crystal Lake Community Town Hall Meeting will be held Wednesday, July twentieth, from six to eight PM at the Bowen Center at fifty-two Bagley Street, Pontiac, and it will be discussing the development proposed at the shores of Crystal Lake. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I think that sums it up. I also would like to make an announcement. I'm sure you know, MDOT is doing a town hall in regards to the Woodward Loop Conversion Project this Thursday, July, is it this Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Is it next week? Uh, next week, next Thursday, fourteenth, I believe, and it is from one to three and five to seven over at the Bowen Center.
On the flyer for the town hall meeting of the shores at Crystal Lake, the July twentieth meeting, there's a note that people should RSVP by July thirteenth. Is that a strong requirement?
I haven't heard it's a strong requirement. I would say it's a, it's a good suggestion, and I would do that if you plan to attend.
Is this stuff on the, information on the City of Pontiac website?
I don't know.
They have been included as communications in the weekly city council meetings, so you can always access them at the publicly posted and available council agenda packets on the city's website. I have a quick question. Mr. Gustafson, when would you like the city council to take up this newly approved motion for the zoning map amendment change that we've just discussed? You don't have to definitively say, but.
Probably.
Does it need to be queued up, or is it ready to roll?
It would be, I would probably bring it up on the nineteenth.
Okay, first reading on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
It is ready to roll as presented. It is ready to roll as presented.
Okay. And what should we expect at the August planning commission meeting?
Good question.
If we know.
Yes, we do, and there's probably more. Right now, Crown Enterprise, I would suspect will be back for August the third. Probably looking at a special exemption permit and probably a zoning map amendment. I know that there has been some further conversations amongst the property owners and also the city, the executive office in regards to that. I believe there's some more meetings later on this week. Also, if, for members of the, a couple of you remember, six forty-five Old South Telegraph, that medical buildings have been sitting dormant for a number of years, that applicant, the owner of that development, is coming back requesting the same zoning map amendment for grow and processing facilities over there. And also, I believe we'll have enough information that at two and four North Saginaw, owned by Blair McGowan, is looking to get a bistro license for that building. I talked to him today, as a matter of fact, to fill in some blanks on some of the application that he had already submitted, and he was gonna get me that in a couple of days. So that would also be a public hearing. Actually, all of the things that we, I just mentioned between Crown Enterprise, six forty-five Old South Telegraph, the bistro, all of them are public hearings to be discussed in front of the planning commission. Donovan, is there anything else that you?
At this time, that, that does sound like the agenda.
Yeah, so.
A follow-up question. The touchless car wash that was on Jocelyn that we made a denial, but with anticipation that more, more to come, will that require further planning commission action, or is that handled administratively, and when might we expect that?
I'll have to go through the minutes and just double check what that motion was. They did resubmit information.
Okay, that's good.
So that, if it does have to come back before a planning commission, it may come back at that August meeting, or if it's an administrative.
If I remember correctly, there was some talk about business hours, there was talk about traffic and so forth, so we'll have to see what information was submitted and go from there.
And when it comes to bistro licenses, does the planning commission make a recommendation to city council, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Similar to the zoning map amendment process.
Yep. Similar to what, if our members of the commission, we did it for the Platte, we also did it for Fillmore Thirteen, and also Alacat, yes.
Yep, and they've all been able to take advantage and start to utilize those bistro licenses. Took a little while, but they got it.
Are all liquor licenses assigned to the City of Pontiac claimed?
Yes, yes.
And is there a designation, some, some class of liquor license that's sort of like the standard?
Yep, so there are, it's called the Class C license is the liquor license associated with bars. Then there are the SDD, specially designated distributor, and SDM license, specially designated merchant license, which are the licenses liquor stores and beer and wine stores carry. And I'm just trying to recall, we are mostly full on Class Cs, and I believe we are over Class SDDM and SDD.
Do those matters come to the planning commission, or how are those determined?
Only for, yet they do come for out the packaged sale of alcoholic beverages. So for liquor stores, when they request either a new license or an updated license, those come as special exemption permit.
Okay. Thank you. Making the most of the light agenda to educate myself, thank you.
I think we are done. Would anyone like a motion to adjourn?
If I could, I'd just like to take this opportunity to say to folks listening, be sure to vote, be sure to vote. Absentee ballots are available now. You can come into the city clerk's office if you need to, grab that ballot, or you may have the ballot sent to you at your home if you haven't already received it, but please vote, very important.
I just have one final comment. I would like to thank, obviously, city council and also the executive office in regards of all the hard work in regards to getting the budget approved on time and met all the deadlines, and most importantly, just wanna give the commission an update in regards to, we were able to get approved for additional staffing for, within the planning division. We also were able to receive funding to hire outside consultants to potentially help us in regards to a master plan update citywide, and same thing with staffing in regards to code enforcement to increase the amount of officers and also a, bringing in a new code enforcement manager. Help us eliminate some concerning issues on properties throughout the city. Yeah. We're gonna be busy. That was it. My end.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Report.
Ballen Saver?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Hey.